Like to call the order, the City Council Workshop for Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Yeah.
Here. What happened?
Dean?
Here.
Muncy?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Mayor Stanton is on vacation. Can I get a motion to please excuse her from today's workshop? I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Stanton from today's workshop.
Second.
Motion Anderson, second Gardner. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Motion carries. And the agenda changes. Any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, today's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add human resources process audit to today's workshop agenda.
I'll second.
Is this a roll call or a voice vote?
Baldwin?
No.
Dean?
No.
Muncy?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
White?
Yes.
And Stanton.
Motion fails. The entire motion fails. Okay, moving on.
Yeah, and I think your rules of procedure actually state that you have to have unanimous approval to add
Oh, I didn't know that.
something, but we can double check on that for a future meeting if it comes up again.
Thank you.
Just one point of clarification as well, as far as it's correct on my staff reports, but we got the title a little bit wrong on your discussion items. It should say evaluation of cross-country trails at landfill property, not airport property, so I apologize for that error. But certainly the memo describes the correct property.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Moving on, we do not have a guest speaker this afternoon. And so now at this time, we will open up public comment on agenda items only. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay. Hello, Glennad Young, Sawgetuck Township resident as officially yesterday, but a true tri-community nature evangelist and area lover, which I will continue to be. On the agenda, item 6E, we have a golden opportunity to conserve and upgrade the airport property, which is owned by Sawgetuck but located in the township. I've been speaking with potential donors since September last year who wish to honor their father who loved this area and passed away. I got a call from my neighbor, a text from my neighbor that knew these people and said, could you give them a call? Because I know you're involved with parks and things around here. So I did, starting last September. Talked to the son and then later the daughter and their grandkids. And it became readily apparent that you can't do anything by yourself this big. And so I contacted and involved my good friend John Vanderbeek and the Riverwood Council folks, of which I have served on for a couple of years now and an active member as we look for champion local conservation and foot trail connectivity needs. I also, as the project went on, involved Kelly Roach and Helen Baldwin from PPW as we needed to gather more information and cost estimates on potential projects. Eventually, we included Ryan Heiss and Scott Herbert in discussions as we started narrowing down the list of possible projects that they would be interested in. Last November, we invited the family members to visit the Sawgetuck area and several of us, including John, I think, who drove that day. And we took them around and showed them projects that we had been talking about that they might be interested in funding because, of course, it's their money and we wanted to push them or guide them in the direction of what they wanted, not necessarily what we wanted. We hiked the airport property that day and they recognized its rugged natural beauty and just loved it. So they requested more information on what kinds of things could be done there and some cost estimates. So it took us a while to do that. We did work with David at ODC, who are great partners. And after a few iterations, we came up with a $130,000 proposal that the donor family has agreed that they would like to support. So it went to Parks and Public Works last week and now it's coming to you. So I robustly encourage the city council to approve this project and the acceptance of the generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Glennad.
Thanks.
Do I have to wait for that timer to go out? Can I take her 10 seconds? Hey, I'm John Vanderbeek, founder of Riverwood Council, and I own 448 Frederick Street. I have three kids that I'm raising in this town and family buried in the cemetery. I'm here to speak in support of the ODC proposal on page 41. I know there's a lot going on with city manager existing parks, street repair. I thank you for all your hard work and perseverance through stuff that just doesn't happen on time. Family matter like this thing, I know there's a lot going on, but it's happening now. And I appreciate you guys for all your work. There's many more reasons too than to not accept the proposal. The property has been owned for 90 years and highlighted in discussions for the last few years. And with a legitimate study from the ODC and your legal counsel last year essentially proving this use with not too many problems and legal side. I appreciate your transparency, thoroughness, consideration of all potential uses. But it's obvious that a vast majority of residents, tourists, and neighbors alike will want and need this use that's proposed. It would be very unpopular today or tomorrow to put off decision, develop, split, or sell off pristine never developed land. So I'd like to see a decision today that reflects this intuition. Life presents few no brainers, and this is one. You guys looked into opening the property at some point. Somebody came in and is offering to pay for it. We already own it. That to me is a no brainer. I think that there's three implications that express our values here. Financial, conservation, domino effect, and our kids. On the financial side, the tourist and real estate business is our industry. And basically, the you know, the land is what services that industry. They come here because it's rural and it's because it's natural and we have parks. The conservation domino effect is you guys are central to four different parks. There's the Dog Park next door. There's River Bluff Park. There's Wade's Preserve. And there's a lot of landowners that are donating land along these corridors. So if we can encourage them to do this, it will create a domino effect of conservation corridors. And for our kids, they need nature immersion that maybe doesn't cost $10 to access. And it's creek. We don't have that. We don't have a park like this. So they don't make new land. This is the best, most honest, most homegrown proposal ever made for this parcel. Mountain biking developed too many trails and benefited an out-of-town corporation. Camper trailers were proposed decades ago and they were proposed by some non-local corporation. The snowmobile trails of the 70s was just for private club. The horseback riding and hiking for generations, the most prominent continuing use of the land. Let's formalize the history and let neighbors continue to enjoy the beauty of Silver Creek alongside locals, tourists, and those lucky enough to find it from out of town.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Hi, my name is Chris Clark. I live in Sawgetuck Township. I'm part of Riverwood Council and I coordinate the Radar Hill Hiking Club. Regarding the agenda item related to the airport property, I did a little research and I'd like to talk for a minute about how hiking trails are more than just a nice thing to have. Trails are great for tourism. And this is based on research that I found, okay? Hiking is an example of something called slow tourism, where people take time to actively engage with the area they visit. And trails attract tourists who like to see these beautiful areas and interact with them. They also provide an option for no-cost recreation, which we don't have a lot of. Trails increase the value of nearby properties. And home buyers rank walking and hiking paths among the most important features of a new community as they're looking. Trails help protect the environment. The Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection found that trails help reduce air pollution, road runoff, soil erosion, and flooding. Trails have a positive effect on the local economy. A 2013 study found that trail hikers spend an average of $60 for a one-day trip. In the summer of 2017, visitors to the Mount Helena Trail System in Montana spent over $4 million in the summer in the surrounding area. And along the Erie Canal Trailway in New York State, visitors in 2012 generated over $250 million in sales. Trails attract new businesses. They beautify the area and they offer an amenity that helps attract and retain workers. Hiking also helps reduce health problems. That keeps workers on the job and it lowers the cost of healthcare. So trails attract tourists, home buyers, and businesses. They also help the environment and boost the economy. To me, it's clear that protecting the airport property and creating new trails there would have a very positive long-term effect on the city of Sawgetuck. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Bobby Gant. I live at 341 Main Street. I've lived in Sawgetuck for 33 years and am currently a member of the city's planning commission. But this afternoon, I am here as chair of the Board of the Sawgetuck Dunes Coastal Alliance to voice our strong support of the donation that would provide for a trailhead, trails, and signage on the old airport property. And as importantly, protect habitat, address invasive species, and create a conservation easement. The city's airport property is a one-of-a-kind treasure or asset, if you prefer an economic term. It is ecologically significant, as detailed in the Outdoor Discovery Center study, which was conducted, I believe, last summer. And by the way, the ODC is an organization for which I have huge respect. And as one of our Coastal Alliance board members noted yesterday in our meeting, the ODC report documents the presence, and I love saying this, of an American chestnut tree on the property, a tree that is now functionally extinct in Michigan. The donation proposed would enable the city to invest in our tourism economy and as importantly, in a way that is consistent with our values as expressed in our tri-community plan. This investment will provide opportunities for our residents, our neighbors, and our tourists to experience the land through trails that would have minimal impact on the ecology while affording the opportunity to experience another aspect of the tri-community's natural beauty. The alliance commends, as I do personally, the family who are offering this very generous donation. We can't imagine a circumstance under which the city would refuse it. Thank you for considering our position. And before I wrap up, on behalf of the alliance again, I want to thank you for the 2022 and 2023 resolutions the city submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle as they both evaluated permits for the proposed marina at the Kalamazoo River Mouth. As you know, both permits were denied. Your voice, no doubt, was so instrumental in that decision, and the Coastal Alliance is forever deeply grateful. And finally, and always, thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bobby.
Well, I'm not going to talk to you about the airport property. I'm talking about something much
Sir, please state your name and address.
My name is Kenneth Butler. I'm speaking on the proposed use of the old landfill site. Brief history, in October of 1967, the commercial record reported that the cities of Sawgetuck, Village of Douglas, and Sawgetuck Township had made a deposit of $100 to purchase 23 acres on land that was just west of the current dump that was owned by Sawgetuck and Sawgetuck Township. The cost was divided between the three communities, 35% to Sawgetuck, 22% to Douglas, and 43% to Sawgetuck Township. And the editorial from '67 complimented the three local governments on working together. They also reported, included this story in their December 1967. The dump operated by the three communities until is referenced in the Environmental Protection Report of September of 1990. The dump was closed August 15th of 1984, was capped with nine inches of sand, 15 inches of clay, and four inches of sand. It was also examined in May of 1996 by the engineering firm Montgomery Watson, who confirmed there was no leakage from the landfill polluting any local wells in Sawgetuck Township. The fall of 2022, I forwarded a copy of this report to Ryan Heiss and he was gracious enough to go ahead and conduct a survey of the property. And the report from your engineers indicated that the property was suitable for walking upon, but could not be developed because you cannot break that cap. The cap is what's keeping us, keeping us safe. Furthermore, the report referenced a study, a report that the landfill pipes were monitored for five years after that. There is no mention of any monitoring since then. I'm asking you to give permission to Sawgetuck Township. We'll clear the trails. We will add those trails on to the trails that we built at the Dog Park. That'll be enough for kids who run for Sawgetuck to have a home meet. They compete at the state level. You should be very, very proud of these young men and women. You have kids graduating this year who never had the thrill of running a home meet. Their parents have never cheered them, watched the huge starting line and how they battled for the finish line. They deserve it. We'll build it. It won't cost you. And we will make sure that we have the appropriate insurance to make sure that the city
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Appreciate your time. Thanks. Anyone else in the gallery?
Diana Decker, 128C Elizabeth. I'm here to talk about property rental management, the rental on the agenda. I just dropped off a letter today to Ryan regarding, and with many months, so the short-term rental committee and everything and listening to people on Zoom and listening to people in the audience. And I'm like, there is quite a few companies that are managing rental homes without an associate or broker's license. Okay, and I'm just here to say, dear city council, planning commission, zoning staff, please be advised that property managers are to be certified as real estate brokers or associate brokers MC-339-2501, which outlines their responsibility and requires tasks to be performed by such brokers. Contrary, like I mentioned, that there are companies that are operating. When a homeowner fills out an application here, I was looking at the application, short-term rental application license. There is a box here for the agency to fill out, the company, the contact. And when they fill out that application, the city needs to verify that agency meets that requirement. And it is a liability for the city to approve. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the gallery like to speak? Okay, anyone online? Sarah?
Yes. RW?
Please unmute yourself.
Hi, Richard Williams, 1050 Elizabeth Street regarding the airport property. I'm not in support of it as is because a complete financial study hasn't been done about the maintenance of this potential park. And also, what is the value of this parcel of land as in highest and best use of the land? And it's unfortunate to see that this plan does not include or carve out of some income-governed residences within the property. There's always a lot of talk in town about affordable housing or where am I going to live? Or where are these people going to live? And there's nothing in this plan for that. I mean, grants and bonds and developers probably would love to partner to develop some of that land to have income-governed housing there for the community or new residents to the area. And I really don't think we need a running track for the 7% of the school district that is city resident. It really seems to be a very expensive proposal for a small town with really high taxes and a council that really is derelict in their duty to steward the financial dealings of the city. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Anyone else online care to speak? Sarah? No? Okay, we'll close our first public comment session, move on to our agenda items. Item one, MA, engineering services for final distribution system material inventory. I believe that is for our manager to start. Kick us off on that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do that. So the city applied for some grant funding from the Michigan Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to do our final distribution system materials inventory. That's a state requirement that we have to comply with by October. And Mr. Moxie worked hard on that application and we were successful. We were granted $221,000 for this project that Mr. Moxie has indicated will actually cover all of the costs, including the engineering work and bidding process and then gathering all the data and preparing those final reports. So he's prepared a proposal for what the engineering cost would be as part of this project. And happy to turn it over to him to provide a few more details and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, this was kind of a, maybe a shot in the dark is the wrong terminology, but it's a brand-new program, so we didn't know what to really expect in terms of likelihood of getting funded. So it's a huge win, especially because this is work that the city has to do regardless of whether we got a grant or not. We need to comply with the lead and copper drinking water requirements by October. Middle of October, we've got to submit our final inventory of where are the problem services in the city. A few years ago, we did a preliminary version of that, which was basically a desktop analysis based on construction records and other things that we could eliminate certain areas of town that way and kind of narrow down. And the rest is just a giant bucket of unknowns. So this program really is set up to eliminate those unknowns. Most of the cost is related to hydro excavating with a vector truck or something like that to excavate a small hole to get down to the surface so that we can tell what it is. Our cost in our proposal is really writing the specifications for that work, administering that contract on behalf of the city, and then field time to document the findings and working with property owners and business owners and things like that. There'll be a lot of coordination involved, obviously. It's fairly low impact in terms of construction. It is kind of a single hole. But it's going to be happening throughout the summer season more than likely. So obviously, we wanted to have somebody there to kind of help direct traffic and things like that. Happy to answer any questions you folks have on this process or kind of the requirements in general.
Anyone have questions for engineer?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, good afternoon, John. Question for you on page four, the anticipated schedule. Construction July through September of '24. That's not replacement of all the lead water pipes, correct?
Good clarification. This is entirely just identifying the problem that exists. Construction to replace the services that we find that need to be replaced, the city has until 2040. But given the numbers that are involved, it's something that needs to happen on a gradual basis, more than likely.
Yeah, thank you. And again, congratulations on guiding us through the process to get that grant. That's a big win for us. Question for the interim city managers regarding to the budget for this, the $55,000. Where are we from a budget standpoint? Do we set this aside? I mean, this is just more of a question about anticipating our budget impact.
Right, so this is a reimbursement-based grant. So we are going to have to obviously pay for the cost for the engineering as well as, you know, the actual work itself and then request reimbursement from Eagle. But Mr. Moxie indicated that even the engineering fees will be fully reimbursed.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So the $55,000 approved will come back out of the grant.
Correct.
Correct. Great. Thank you. Good work, John. Appreciate your efforts on this.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. I should have mentioned that right off the bat. It's as good as you're ever going to find.
Question. See the grants and the amount of, you know, roughly just under a quarter million. I see this is their quest for $55,000. Could you catch me up on like the trajectory of the rest of that grant funding? And what's being planned there?
Yeah, the rest of the grant is the physical construction. I call it construction. It's really just excavation and restoration work. But the rest of that amount is budgeted for hiring a contractor to go out and do the physical excavation work so that we can visually see what the materials are that, you know, exist out in the field.
Understood. Thank you.
One other question, Madam Mayor. Who will be responsible for actually remitting this back to the grant funders for reimbursement? Is that the engineer's responsibility? Is that the city's responsibility?
Right, so ultimately, it's the city's, but certainly I'll be working with Mr. Moxie on completing those forms and then sending them on, so.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, John. Appreciate you.
Great, thanks. Good to be with you.
Thank you. Next up is City Hall Drainage and Concrete Work. Looks like Mr. Hardy will tee this up for us.
Yes, we went and received some bids on connecting the downspouts from the gutters at City Hall into tying them into the storm drains of the city, which will reduce the amount of water that's actually going into the basement on the rainy days. But we're recommending going with Kramer Services at $12,335. That's complete trenching installation of four-inch PVC and concrete demo and reporing new concrete.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hardy?
Quick one.
Please.
Do we have to put $12,000 out for bid or no?
Ryan.
That was actually one of the bids.
Oh, it was. I'm sorry.
We have three bids tied.
There are three there. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
What made you guys go with Kramer?
Um, I've actually hired them a couple of times for doing work in the parks. Yep, had experience with them with irrigation and boring underneath sidewalks. And they've actually done quality work for us in the past.
Great. Thank you.
Now I can see it. They are a little bit. They are a little bitter. So I can see it now.
Remember, Anderson. So I'm curious, their bid was considerably lower than the others. Any insight into what the, I mean, there was a pretty huge gap.
Right. From what I've noticed, even when contracting them out for park work, irrigation, anything like that, they've actually come in much lower than other landscapers as well. I'm not too sure on what kind of overhead he runs and maybe it's just I'm not too sure, but he always comes in much lower than everyone else.
Yeah, I appreciate you looking at that and finding that value and going through several, you know, and presenting us with several options. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Yeah, and Scott Herbert had, you know, raised that question too and had our engineer take a look. And the engineer, I mean, Mr. Moxie is still on it. He didn't see any, didn't feel like the bid was totally abnormal or that he had concern that it was at a rate that gave him any heartburn, correct, John?
Yeah, in this bidding climate, it's not unusual to see a spread like this, especially when you've got a local contractor. They're probably more efficient and they're looking to build their business where prone is probably got more work than what they can handle already and priced it as such.
Wonderful. Any further questions for Cody?
Just more of a comment. Thanks, Cody, for being here today. So just kind of a pitch. I know it says landscape restoration is not included in the bids. I've had some conversations with Scott Herbert about this. And I would just want to put this out there for suggestion as we get to that point is I think this is a great opportunity for us to rethink how we landscape City Hall. I think it would be important to talk about maybe doing natural vegetation, you know, to incorporate with the dunescape and et cetera. I've just, and I know that's not necessarily going to be inexpensive, but I think it's very, we've done so much work and effort to make City Hall safe, attractive. It's what people see when they come into town. I think if we can include some of that into that discussion when it comes forward, just putting that out there.
Yeah, I know last year, shortly after restoration was done, we were looking into bidding that out. We have We have had, I think, three or four landscape companies that we contacted get back with us to start getting those ballpark ideas on what it costs for landscape. Right now, I think that two of them actually came back with renderings. That's something I'd have to talk Scott about. I think he has renderings of getting some ideas and leverage on how much that'd cost.
I'd be interested in seeing that, too. I think that would be fun for all of us to be a part of that.
Sure.
No pressure, Cody.
No, no.
No pressure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item C, Cemetery Services Agreement Extension, and that is for Mr. Manager to tee up, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. So Sagittuck Township had approached me indicating that an agreement that you had previously approved was a two-year agreement was expired and was looking to renew the cemetery services agreement that they had with the city. So essentially, by understanding, this is a longstanding agreement where the this the township gives city residents in district rates, which are $120 for a burial and cremation plot versus, you know, the much higher cost of out of district that that $2,000 in exchange, we assist with some of the the mowing costs at the cemetery. And so this is actually a partnership with with Douglas as well. And so it's kind of a formula based on on population. So they went out for bids and actually the costs on on this updated two-year agreement would actually be a little bit less than they were under the previous kind of flat amount of $6,000 for this year and next year, whereas they were a little bit higher than that previously.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I did talk with Township Manager Daniel DeFranco about this a while back and was was indicating this would be coming to us. It's very interesting, cemeteries are usually not very controversial, but interesting enough, in in the past, there have been some issues between the city and the township and the Village Now City around this agreement. Unfortunately, that's all gone away. So I think this is just another, you know, this is a contractual relationship we have with one of our intergovernmental partners. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just very humbled and proud that we actually have this as something that citizens don't really think much about. But when they need it, it's, you know, it's there for them. So and I think the township is actually, if I understand correctly, is actually planning to rehab the utility building or the grounds building that's on site. So they're already beginning to invest some additional money and making sure that the, you know, cemetery remains available and pretty, if that's the right word for future generations, so.
I think anytime we have the, you know, something that benefits both of us to collaborate together, it's a great thing.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to item D, Short Term Rental Noise and Zoning Fines. Again, Mr. Manager, lead us.
Yeah, so this is something that we that you reviewed at your last work session meeting as part of an overall short-term rental enforcement plan. A portion of that that plan involved following the short-term rental task force recommendation that that your fines be evaluated and and looking at potential increases. And then with the new short-term rental licensing ordinance that you establish, we we would want to make sure and establish actual fine amounts for particular violations. So what's before you is consistent with what was before you a couple of weeks ago. We had to put it in a resolution and ordinance format. So that's now ready for, you know, your further review and and feedback and and you're welcome to to change these these fine amounts. I kind of explained some of that, my thinking along those lines at your last meeting, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I I would agree that we went through this pretty extensively at the last meeting and we'll open up discussion at this time if anyone has further discussion regarding the fines and penalties. No? Okay. Moving along to item E, Potential Donor for Airport Property Improvements. In our packet. And will you tee this up or did you want me to?
I can start and and you're welcome to get started there, so.
Please go ahead.
All right, well, just by by way of history, a bit, you know, last year, your Parks and Public Works Committee and you as a city council, you know, prioritized a lot of various work at the airport property that is actually property that's located within Sagittuck Township. It's 170 acres located in the area of 63rd Street, 134th Avenue. And so some of that work last year involved a phase one environmental assessment by our engineering firm, ecological evaluation, sustainability evaluation, trail map overview. There were planning sessions related to, you know, strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. The prior manager had evaluated some of the liability concerns that they're evaluated some liability or did an assessment of liability and risk as it related to having more formal trails out there as well as ADA requirements. He discussed that and reviewed that with our legal team. And then there was an initial zoning inquiry into the township about any zoning approvals that would be required. And so since that time, as was mentioned during the public comments today, the Outdoor Discovery Center has since provided a proposal that would, you know, develop trails and signage, create a trailhead, kind of improve the parking area out there. As you saw from the ecological evaluation, there's some invasive species issues. And so this proposal would combat some of that, restore habitat. And then it also proposes placing a conservation easement over a portion of the property if there's a desire for that. So their proposal for that cost would be $130,000. And and as you heard, there's a donor that has since approached members of the Parks and Public Works Committee with an interest in fully funding this proposal. So as we look at at this current year, your strategic planning that you did in in December did have the airport property as on the list of priorities, but it was at a level three and not one of the higher priorities for the the year. The city doesn't have like a specific, you know, like policy or procedure or ordinance or even really consistent practice without a handled donation. So I felt that, well, one, the Parks and Public Works Committee discussed this at their last meeting and felt this shouldn't come forward to you. And I felt that it was best to bring this before you to to make a decision on whether or not you wanted to, you know, kind of engage in further discussions with the donor and their interest in funding these proposed items. I I put some items for you to consider in the memo, happy to go through those. But I think I trust most of you have read that and happy to answer any questions that you may have and.
Thank you. Yeah, it won't be surprising any of you that is the chair of the Parks and Public Works Committee. We've been working on this for some time. The donor coming forward, one thing that I wanted that I want to say is that the donor selects what they want to put the donation to. We don't always get to identify a project. I certainly personally have things that it would be nice that we know we're working on Mount Bald Head and one thing doesn't preclude the other. We still have the work to do there. We've got the funds for that. We've got, we're going and we're moving ahead in a positive direction to get the Mount Bald Head improvements done. But I know that that's been a topic that that people that want to push it, you know, what about that? This is something that they've looked into, they're excited about it, they want to, they want to fund it. It's there for us and I cannot think of any reason why wouldn't, we wouldn't joyfully accept this donation. Member Anderson, please.
Yes, so I want to appreciate all the comments folks made. Couple of things that have been raised several times is one, what's the value of the asset? And, you know, have we really explored the valuable options? So I want to spend some time on both of those. So as we know, the part of actually, there are two parcels that form that property located in the township. The first parcel has about 152 acres and its cash value, true cash value is $1,013,354. The smaller parser, parcel has a true cash value of $242,615. So, you know, do the rounding, it's $1.26 million. And that's according to the Township Assessor Kelly Jealouson. Township just last week, I think it was last week, passed, the Township Board passed a new zoning ordinances. And so there are fairly significant restrictions on how that land can be developed. It's eligible for 17 lot splits with a minimum of 2.5 acres per lot. So in terms of the affordable housing idea, that's pretty much off the table, given the restrictions and lot size. So when we looked the report that council did years ago, and I can't remember the year, it went through a host of options for, you know, what could be done with that land. It seemed like the ones where there were energy around selling it either to develop or to develop or to create affordable housing, use the asset to expand our recreation parks, conservation efforts, or do nothing. So when we look at each of those, if we sold it, we could sell it to a developer for, you know, say $1.26 million. But we have to know that that would be a one and done. I mean, that property then is no longer ours and we wouldn't say it was developed with, you know, fancy schmancy big lots. All of those property taxes would go to the township and not to the city. So essentially, we would, you know, we we get money and, you know, 1.26 million is a lot of money. And, you know, also not a huge, huge amount of money, I mean, it's, but it's good money. If we invested it in a T bill, we'd get about $50,000 a year, which is more than the Falcon Asphalt Hot Box Reclaimer we approved at 42K. But it's, you know, 50K is, it's, it's not like we're gonna do a ton. Alternatively, we could put that money into projects like replacing lead pipes or, you know, repairing more of our streets. But I would argue those funds really should come, you know, out of, I mean, I I think blowing 1.26 investing, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say blowing, on on the projects like that is equivalent to my selling my Volkswagen in 1978 to buy a winter coat. Made sense at the time, but it was a bad financial decision for me longer term. So it gets to expanding recreations, parks, conservation. Chapter seven of the Tri-Communities Master Plan is devoted to recreation and open space and discusses open space as a recreational and amenity asset of the communities. I know that, you know, Councilmember Gardner has read that plan. If others haven't had a chance yet to get to that chapter, it's well worth reading. A quote, "Park recreation and open space are essential to the quality of life of area residents and are an important component of the local tourist economy. They enhance property values as well as physical and psychological well-being." And I think Mr. Clark spoke eloquently to that. So the macro appeal to me of this option is that we were both preserving and enhancing and endure and enduring an impossible to replicate city asset. The case short term is highly compelling. The donor gift would create what we've all discussed. It's sort of a light use of that valuable property. And really important to me as a conservationist is the conservation easement and addressing the invasive species. Longer term, it gives us time to explore whether we want to expand the conservation easement, potentially expand the trail system or do both. Doing nothing is the other option people have talked about. And I think it would be insane for us to walk away from $130,000 donation. Two more points I want to make, and Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin made this point. This isn't an either or. I mean, I really don't, we get out of the binary thinking. Clearly Bald Head is a priority for the city. It was identified, you know, and we're making progress. I look forward to hearing about how we're going to develop both the, you know, the bathrooms and the the top platform. And we can do that and do this. It's my understanding is we have about $700,000 in the Parks and Public Works budget to cover that and more. And then the other one is the not a priority. And I'm going to pick a little bone with us. I thought our strategic planning session in December was great. And we had good discussions around priorities, but we did that in small groups. And I can't remember if there were four or five groups, but we all, you know, talked and then reported back. But we never as a council looked at sort of the aggregation of what each of those groups did. And so I I think it would be worth our while and I hope as we get a new city manager, we will revisit priorities and kind of do the last lap, which is, well, this is what this group said and this is what this group said. We've aggregated it, but do we agree that these are the priorities? So I'm making a plug for later on. But that aside, even if the airport priority wasn't a top priority, accepting this donation to do the work outlined by the proposal is, I think it results in a fairly light lift for city in terms of maintenance. And I, you know, I'm curious to know what the added insurance cost will be. But I have to think that surely we have the creative creativity and the will to effectively and resource and effectively and efficiently resource this. So I am a strong supporter of this and hope we can go forward.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead. First of all, I'd like to thank the donor. I mean, it's an incredibly generous offer and that's not to be understated. I mean, it's a huge, huge and very kind offer on their behalf. I I would echo many of Councilmember Anderson's points. The one thing that I does give me pause is what the expectations for the property as a whole would be, you know, and for what period of time, you know, DPW currently does use the property for for certain purposes. I'm certainly in favor of preserving the the area around the creek and some of the more sensitive areas. There are some areas that are extraordinarily sensitive on that property that I verbally believe should be preserved in perpetuity. There are other areas, though, that, you know, were planted with invasives. There are some areas that are, you know, need a lot of work flooded, you know, in bad shape. Personally, I've always liked the idea of it being more of a multi-purpose type of property that, you know, might have the potential for sports fields and things like that, that would benefit the community as well. So I'm very close to a yes on this. And once again, a big thank you to the donor. I would just like a little bit more clarity on what their expectations are in terms of, you know, in in return for this $130,000, you know, this can never be done or this can be done. I just want a little bit more clarity on that. But my bias is toward yes. I would just like a little bit more clarity on exactly, you know, what restrictions the donor would want to place on it. But I think I feel like we're very close because preserving that creek that goes into the Kalamazoo watershed, I think, is critical. There are, there is habitat there that absolutely should be preserved and a buffer should be created for wildlife. And and I also do believe that all the people that live in this community have every right to enjoy that property and the recreation that it offers. So I'm very close, but I would like a little bit more clarity.
Thank you. Member White.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to just a little articulately echo the comments of Councilmember Dean. Appreciate the that someone believes in this enough to donate that some of the money, that's pretty serious. They must be very, very convinced that this is a great thing. I walked, I've had the opportunity to walk the property. It is, there are some vistas out there and it'd be nice to be able to share that more formally with people, which is really nice. I share the concern for further clarity on the cost. You know, what is, what are we adding to our balance sheet here with this? I'd say that we're probably adding value, you know, too, because we're actually getting a use out of it. Looked here basically my whole life and never been able to access that. So it's kind of interesting to me. I share the concern for clarity on the stipulations on the donation. If someone's doing that that amount of money, we have to respect, you know, and and part of that is, you know, fully, fully considering what that means. So treating that with the respect that that deserves is important to me. I also am curious about the period of time that we're committing this to in the the easement. I'd be, I'd be curious to know that. And I share, or member Anderson's call for further clarity on our priorities as a council. I also felt like we we left that kind of on the table in the in what was happening there. So appreciate that call out, too.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment or any questions?
Yeah. I want to appreciate, thank you, Glenn, for your work on the Parks and Public Works Commission. Thank you very much and and all the committee members, as well as the people that spoke here today. The airport property has a long history in town. At one time, it was going to become a golf course. It was this close to becoming a golf course. So there's been interest in development over the years and and so this is one of many serious proposals to do something with the property. And so where I struggle with this is, and and thank you, Councilmember Dean and Councilmember White for talking about, you know, what is going to be the expectations of the donor. Since the city does not have a donor policy, we have a policy to, you know, purchase a park bench or put a name on something. But we don't have anything in place that really helps guide us in these kinds of situations. That's not something we can develop overnight in time for this, but it's something I think we definitely need to put on our priority list in terms of being able to facilitate these things more efficiently. The other thing that that really comes to mind and and The other thing that, that really comes to mind and, and it is, what is the city's long-term responsibility for this from a cost standpoint? Our resources are maxed out. Our public works team is maxed out. Our employees are maxed out in terms of projects on tops of projects. And, and that has me concerned from a financial as well as just a resource standpoint. You know, the city of Sagatuck is very, it's, it's a great interest to a lot of people, including those that live here, of course. But this is something that, from a priority standpoint, just from my mind is, it's there, we should be talking about it. But we should be talking about it in the sense that we need to do a more high-level evaluation. And again, I appreciate the passion of the people that are here to talk about it because I'm a hiker. I'm a conservation proponent as well. However, my first hat that I put on is a city council member in protecting the financial resources of the city, including that property. And that property has a value. And thank you very much, Councilmember Anderson, for doing the research. That's a county value. That does not represent the fair market value of the property. Right, and, and it's been brought up in numerous meetings by different letters to the editor and comments that are made is that there's a part of this process that has not really been addressed in an official manner, in my opinion. And that's actually taking the entire community's perspective into focus here and asking what the citizens would like us to do. Ultimately, it's my job as a council member is to make a decision on things that are presented. However, I've heard enough voices out in the community that lead me to believe that we are not looking at this in the proper manner. Where first things first is to really kind of step back and say, we appreciate the donor's flexibility. I'm assuming that if we were to say we conditionally will accept that, but we have some work to do to evaluate what is the best use for the property? I'm assuming anybody that has an interest in that would be willing to go along with that. So I, I, again, I've said this a number of times, and today I'm, I'm just reemphasizing, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We should really step back and say, okay, what is the value of this property? And have an official valuation of what's the best use and getting community input. We've had a lot of community input. We've had a lot today. We've had other people written letters. And I think it's, I think it's important for us to get feedback from the community in terms of what they'd like to see us do with this long-term. And I just, and thanks to the Parks and Public Works Committee. I'd really like to see some energy applied to this, like they've done with the, with the playground property. Love to see some more Park Street, Baldhead invasive species, or other things at the Parks and Public Works Committee. I'd love to see some more. So, thank you.
Thank you. If I, if I may, I just want to address a couple of points there. We've, when, when it comes to community perspective, we conducted a SOAR analysis. We have had this out there in, in front of the community for well over a year, as long as I've been on a chair on this. As far as maintaining trails, which would be left to the city, I've also spoken to the folks that would be involved. Trail maintenance is, is not an expensive thing. I mean, the, the amount of money that the, the time that is spent on the Wollam Trail would be something that's similar to this. Wollam Trail doesn't even have garbage to take out. So I think that I do agree with the perspective of we do need some clarity on where we would want to go as far as a conservation easement. I would be in favor of the, the vistas and then the, and the river, making sure that the creek, making sure that we take care of the creek and that area. I know that we've talked to ODC, and then we've got some clarity on that. And we would have that presented and make sure that we talk to our donor. It doesn't have to be immediately. We would obviously want to get this worked out. We don't need to rush into this. But it's worth bringing to us. And then as far as, I think part of that goes with, are we willing to take this on? Are we willing to open that up? Then we have that conversation about how much of the conservation overlay we do. Given that there are areas that are already disturbed, I would think it'd be worthwhile looking at having some areas conserved that make a lot of sense, that take care of our watershed and other areas that maybe we could hold open for a possible ball field or a community center or something like that. So I think that we have that. But as far as community outreach, that, that has been done widely. And, and it's actually been included in the packet for your, for your perusal. So please, Mr. Muncy.
Yeah, thank you. I want to echo kind of a little bit what everybody said here. I just learned about this this week, and thank you so much. What a wonderful, what a wonderful donation, really. It shows a lot how much our residents, you know, care and everything. That was the first thing that hit my head was that what are our future expenses? You know, what are the maintenance? What's the insurance? So, you know, we're gonna have to have liability, those kinds of things. I'd like to know those before we go forward. And I appreciate you saying we don't have to rush about this. I remember it wasn't that long ago, I think it was right before you moved here, was the, the big generous donation that was made to redo the Wicks Park thing. And, and it was graciously accepted. There was a deadline to it. It almost felt like we had to make a decision right away. And so we reached out, or that council at that time had reached out to, and had a good community discussion about it and brought out designs for it. It ended up being such a, you know, such a rushed process to get this design and this one design that was approved of, that unfortunately, there was a big petition against, against having that that changed the council's mind about going about building it. The donor ended up pulling out of that, of that. And so I just want to make sure we take our time. We know our expenses. We know that the DPW can handle it. I know that the DPW is having a challenging time with their current schedule, as well as trying to find someone to run that concession stand right now as well. And I know they haven't found anybody yet to do that. So I know they've got a big plate on there. I know it might not be a whole lot more maintenance, but I would like to know exactly what that is before we went forward.
Thank you. And we did, we toured it with the insurance and legal, nothing more to, nothing more for that, for that property. We've already looked at that, so that's all set. And as far as rushing, what I mean is, this, this process has not been rushed. This process has been out there in front of the community. There's been no rushing. I want to make sure we understand, again, carts and horses were brought up. We have to understand, do we have the appetite to take this on? And if so, then we talk about the conservation overlay and things like that and what makes sense. So we are exactly in the place that we need to be. PPW sent it to council, and this is exactly the process that they do. PPW has no power on their own to make any of these decisions. The only power that, that we have as a committee is to bring something to council. I don't even vote on it when it comes to that. I abstained from all voting at Parks and Public Works. So I want you to know that that's the case, too, it was unanimously brought. Please.
Yeah, just one thing. I, I, I mean, this is a great donation, and I was remiss in not expressing my gratitude to the donor. I mean, this is a huge flipping deal, I mean, and a very generous gift. And so I hope we can keep the spirit of how can we make this happen? I mean, absolutely, we don't want to overtax our, our, you know, public works employees. And we, you know, we need to be smart, but we can also be creative and sort of like, you know, how can we roll up our sleeves and make this happen? We are a smart, creative bunch of people, and I think we, we can and should make this work.
Yeah, and, and to compare it to, to the Wicks, I, I do remember that, in completely different thing about changing this gazebo for that gazebo, I think it's a completely different situation. Now, the sad thing is that we did lose a donation, but it, but the, the point is, is that a donor gives to what the donor wants to. I think that, that the one thing that I would align with these two is that a donor wants to give what the donor wants to give to. And it's not, we don't just get this opportunity to, oh, it'd be great if we could take that money and put it somewhere else. That's not how it works with donations.
I think I'd be clear with that, yeah.
And if, if my memory serves, the donor became so frustrated with the process that the donor elected to pull their, their donation. And, and I, and I would hate to see us create that kind of precedent in, in Sagatuck. Because we have so many generous people that really want to give back to the community. And I would hate to see a second circumstance that kind of creates that message that Sagatuck just can't ever agree on anything. There's too much controversy. Everybody's upset and throwing their hands in the air. And so don't even bother trying to donate to your community because you're just gonna get, get it in the neck from the Facebook crowd.
Absolutely.
Yes, please, Mr. White.
I think this is kind of two steps for this, this property in that it's the conservation and the use, I think are kind of two different things a little bit. I'd be curious about what, because the donor wants to fund the proposal. Is it both of those? You know, like, is it like, do they mostly want to conserve it? Do they really want to turn it into a trail? Like, where is the, what's the priority on there? I'm curious. The other one is, you know, this is deep into the township. It's a huge piece of property. I'm sure that the township would be excited to see us do something like this. I would just want to work, have it be very open and clear.
Oh, absolutely.
From the perspective of like, me not knowing a ton about this project. I know it's probably the conversations have started. I'm sure they've happened. I've not been cultured to them. I don't, I don't know what's going on there. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, really in lockstep with the township on that, if that's something. And, you know, and later, we're talking about cross-country trails at the landfill property. Is there an opportunity to like, because I know these properties are pretty close together. Is there an opportunity to combine those? Is there like some incredibly amazing, you know, world-class, first-of-its-kind sort of organization? Is that property big enough to have the trails over there? And then this could just be a conservation easement? So I'd be curious about how those, I don't think we can evaluate those without, in, outside of the context of each other. It's just something to think about.
Thank you. All right. Okay.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, just, just one last comment. If it, I'm trying to make this as clear as possible, is that the SOAR analysis, and I have all the due respect for the Outdoor Discovery Center, great organization, well-established. The SOAR analysis, however, even in their, even in their information says that, and the SOAR analysis is not the type of analysis that I think that the city should engage on this property. And that's no disrespect against the SOAR analysis itself, but it says in here, and I probably won't be able to find it quickly enough, even the Outdoor Discovery Center says that it represents the opinions of the people that were in that small group. It is not the entire community, so.
The entire community was invited to.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, let me finish my comment, please. That, there's enough people that have asked questions about this that I do not think that did represent the entire community. And that's part of what my, I feel my responsibility is to make sure all voices are heard, everything is put on the table. If this becomes the communities, and the entire community, all the taxpayers support, I'm on board. Until we get there.
I guess, I guess I would say, you know, a majority rules in a democracy. So I think, you know, there will always be disagreements on what we do with city assets. And part of our job as elected officials is to make these hard decisions, which sometimes are unpopular.
If there's, if there's, if there was 100%, there wouldn't be, no need for a council.
Yeah, Councilmember Dean, I, I have no problems making difficult decisions. I, I, I don't think this is clear enough for me yet, so.
Okay. Are we all set?
I, I, I will say one more comment. I think it would be worth having a community involvement with that park and having, what, what, what would hurt us? Having an open house at the SCA or here and, and having, having an open format about the property and asking people their opinions. I, I, I think that would be wonderful. I think the community would, would love it. I love what they did at the township with their parks, and I, I thought that was a wonderful example. I would like to see us do that with our parks as well.
I don't under, I'm very curious sincerely. We had, all of these were posted meetings. We had them for the five-year plan. We had them for specifically for the airport property. We have open meetings, this is on the agenda. I don't know what else we do to solicit community involvement other than what we are currently doing. I feel like, I don't feel I know. This is a, this is the process. This is the process that we go through. We have a committee. The committee put out the airport property. We had a SOAR analysis. We had a donor show up. Now we're here discussing the donation to open this. This is, this is the process. This is open. This is open to the community. Anybody can get here and talk about what they want to see. That, that's what we're doing right now.
Hmm. I, I think it would be, it would be more enlightening, I think it would be more engaging if we did something, like I said, an open meeting to all folks, not just a regular council meeting, but something.
Like a SOAR analysis.
Pardon?
Like the SOAR analysis.
You know what, just ideas about that park and all of our parks, about what folks would like to see in all of our parks.
Like the Parks and Public Work Five-Year Plan, event that we held at the library on September 21st, to all the, to all the entities.
But this, this was, was this included in that study?
For everything. You can put, you could.
Sorry, just didn't recall that.
All of it, yeah, all of it. Please, Mr. Gardner.
Again, I would just emphasize that the, the fact that there are still, and again, I just, I just have to step back and say, as a council member, taxpayer, representative of those that pay taxes here, what is the best and final use for this property? For the community, the entire community? Not just a small group that was part of the SOAR analysis. Again, no disrespect against the SOAR analysis, but that's a very limited analysis of what the property actually can best be used for. That is one analysis. And again, it's an asset. It's got a value, as was demonstrated by Councilmember Anderson. It's got a financial value. The city has a lot of financial responsibilities coming up in future years, which we need to be prepared for. And this may be an opportunity. And again, I'm not saying that sale of the property is the best use. I just think that has to be evaluated in the whole context of what we have in front of us.
And to be clear, I would love to see that conserved. I would love to see trails. I'm just looking at fiscal responsibility, and I think that we need to really pay attention to that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to evaluation for cross-country trails at the landfill property. I'm scrolling down to get to it here. And I believe you will be kicking us off, Mr. Manager.
Certainly, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Butler, I think he's still here, right? I can't see what, all right, all right. He wouldn't, he wouldn't leave the conversation, would you say? Yeah. Rock on, all right. So, Mr. Butler, who you heard from during your, your public comments today is with the, a member of the Sagatuck Township Parks and Rec Commission and has, she's certainly passionate and really wants to see some, some cross-country trails here, here locally. And, and, and he's kind of brought this idea to the forefront a, a couple of times. And, and the Parks and Public Works Committee did have some discussion about his proposal last week. And so essentially, the city, there's a, there's an old landfill off of 196 in the township that Mr. Butler is proposing, how some, some cross-country trails. And Mr. Butler's indicated that, that there's interest from the Sagatuck Parks and Recreation Commission and, and kind of, you know, funding the installation of those trails and maintaining them going forward. So during a special meeting last week with the Parks and Public Works Committee, they did, you know, kind of move forward recommendation to you to kind of allow staff to, to take the next steps to, to evaluate that property further for cross-country trails. So as far as work that's kind of already been done and evaluated on this, last year, you guys approved a Phase One environmental assessment of the old landfill property that was completed by our engineering firm. And then when this kind of inquiry, it, it come up, I did ask our engineers if they had any preliminary, you know, comments or thoughts on, on trails in this particular property. And they didn't see an issue with passive recreational use, provided the paths did not wear down the cover material that was placed as part of the closure with the state, and indicated that the city had an obligation to maintain the cover, to be protective of the users of the property. And our engineer had recommended that you probably need to do some, some methane testing, even though it's a historic landfill and it's been a number of years. It's something that they, they would recommend. They said that we need some, some vent overhaul and then kind of an ongoing plan to inspect and maintain that landfill cap, which does include the soils out there. The prior manager had also reached out to Eagle's Material Management Division about this particular site as well. And they took a look at a historical EPA report. And there were some, some comments about the, certainly the cap. They had also raised that, that Waste Management had operated or owned and operated the site and, and would be in the chain of liability. So that's something that would have to be evaluated. In fact, our, our city treasurer believes that there may be some sort of historic agreement with Waste Management that, that has some, some things to evaluate and how the site may be used. They noted that there was a soil sample that did show some elevated levels of contaminants, but noted that with proper care and maintenance, limited and appropriate development around the landfill may be possible. But again, just like our engineers, you know, the care should be taken out to damage the cap and to remove any vegetation that, that could damage the cap. So really, to, to really further evaluate this, it's going to involve certainly some staff time and, and then some professional services and further evaluation testing with our engineers, environmental testing, evaluation of prior, prior agreements. And ownership has come up between the township and Douglas. That would take some, some probably legal review as well. I did talk with the township manager about this, and, and they'd indicated that it wasn't something at the, the top of their priority list. But if the city had moved it up, that, that he thought that there would be interest in, in maybe jointly discussing some sort of cost sharing on the cost to further explore this. Mr. Butler, my understanding, it reached out to Douglas as well, and the Douglas manager, you know, has some concerns as it relates to their, their priority list. You know, if, if they're somehow involved in the chain of ownership or, or may have some sort of responsibilities. But, you know, she requested that we kind of let them know what your decision was here tonight, and whether you wanted to pursue this further at this time, or if it's something that, you know, you want to kind of evaluate further at strategic planning later this year.
Thank you. So yes, this is, actually was brought to us by PPW as well. And Mr., as Mr. Butler spoke about, the, the ability for our cross-country runners to, to practice here, to have meets here. And that the, the commission, the Parks Commission for the township, I think most of you know, operate independently. They have a millage, so they have the ability to take on the financial responsibilities for this. And they, they have a, a big interest in doing so. So this is brought to our attention. So this is brought to our attention that they would be willing to do it, to take care of it, to lease it, you know, come up with any sort of, uh, maintenance issues. They would, they would fully bear that, but really just in the effort to offer this up for cross-country trails. I've hiked it. It's, I mean, it's a landfill. You can go all the way around it. It's, it's kind of flat. It's, it's actually makes for really good cross-country trails. Makes sense to me. And, uh, so it's just time to start seeing where we are with this and, uh, and possibly take it off of just something that to, to sit there. But I do agree, it's, I mean, we've looked at the ecological studies and, um, it would, some, some of the methane testing would need to be done. Make sure the cap's still in, in a good place and all that. That still has to be done, that this is not a, um, a slam dunk. But, uh, just wanted to get our appetite for, uh, the ability to, um, entertain the township's generous offer. Please, Mr. Dean.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll kick this off since, I'll start with a disclosure. Um, both myself and Councilman Gardner have kids in the school. My daughter actually ran the, um, cross-country meet at the, um, the, the tails to trail area, the dog park. And, you know, I don't know if she's going to run cross-country this fall or not, but just put that out there. I guess my primary concern would be just to make sure, uh, that it's safe for the athletes. And, um, if, if it is safe for the athletes and it's not burdensome on staff and in, in an undue way, I, I'd be all in favor of it. It, it removes the need for the kids to do a loop. You know, it, it would allow them to create a single, a single loop as opposed to have to cross back on themselves, which is complicated when you have kind of a, you know, figure eight type course, if you will, where they have to look and see who's coming and who's going. And it's hard to keep track of kids. And sometimes people take a wrong turn and then they don't do the full course. So I, I would say, you know, that property is very much encumbered with, you know, these landfill issues, you know, so I don't, we did look at it once. I, I was there with the former manager and some representatives from the electric utility about the possibility of doing a ballasted solar array on top of the cap. That never really went anywhere. But once again, that would, I don't think what's being proposed would preclude us from doing other possible. And, and, and the possibilities are actually quite limited on a landfill anyway. So, uh, if, if the safety concerns can be satisfied with, you know, with the high school, uh, you know, regarding the safety of their athletes, um, I'd, I'd be all in favor of, of bringing that very, very kind of encumbered property into some sort of, uh, productive use, if, if, if it's not burdensome on the taxpayers or a city staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Protem, I want to thank Mr. Butler for, uh, being here today. Just from a priority standpoint, I suggest this, this just be moved to our next strategic discussion to put this into the queue with everything else. Again, uh, staff is overwhelmed. We have a lot in front of us, hiring a new city manager. We're dealing with some other issues. We have summer season upon us. We are going to be tapped out. And, um, I just think this is something that's not a priority for the city at the moment. Not to say that it shouldn't be discussed, but I think it should definitely go into the strategic planning process.
I, I guess I would just respond to that. You know, when, when would we need to make a decision? You know, the, the, the cross-country season isn't till the fall, I believe. So we have a bit of time and I, and I'm not sure getting it ready for a meet. They were able to pull together what was needed to do the last meet at the tails to trails in a fairly short order. So if, if I was given a sort of deadline for a no-go, so, so the kids this season, this coming cross-country season could, could actually run and have a home meet, I, I'd entertain making a, I'd, I'd entertain participating in a vote prior to what I think would be December strategic planning. I, I would definitely entertain a vote earlier if I get a sense on what the deadline is.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I will echo what, uh, pretty much almost verbatim, uh, what Mr. Dean said. I will add to it. My personal thing here is in addition to high school cross-country, we have some older people who have bad knees and a, a trail like that would be, uh.
Anyone in particular?
Yeah, I mean, you know, maybe somebody say sixty-seven-ish orange sweatshirt. So I do think it's a, it's a, it, it's great to have. I mean, this is sort of like rerouting the Christmas parade where, you know, we routed it differently. And it's like, I think it's a pretty, especially with the township willing to do the work, you know, provided it's safe. Again, I would love to approach this with, how can we make it happen? It's, it's not a huge lift and for kids to be able to have a home, you know, a home field or home track for their meets, I think would be a pretty.
And, and that's what it's doing here, like this.
And older people who want to run.
We, we, we pulled it out of PPW to present. We've been talking about it in PPW for enough time. And at some point, PPW does not like, again, Sagatuck or the township's, um, Parks Commission, we don't have our, um, a millage and the authority to do things. So they bring it to council and it's, and it's up to council to give it the thumbs up or thumbs down. And then that's what it's doing here. Certainly, um, there's nobody here I'm sure that would argue against making sure that everything is safe and tested and in, you know, in good shape. And, um, and, and again, to get things to the place where we would then be able to talk about an agreement with the township. And I think that that's really the, the spirit of bringing it to this point out of, out of the Parks and Public Works Committee. I'm sorry, Mr. White, did you want it?
Oh, yeah. My understanding, um, of this right now, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the township is looking to manage this?
Yes.
And like whatnot? So I don't know that the burden on city staff would be.
So in fairness, the burden on city staff would be just getting that agreement. I think, I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for city staff, but there's getting the agreement in place, getting the testing done, get, you know, getting the inter, I'm sorry.
Intergovernmental agreement.
I'll let her.
Yeah, what would the burden on city staff be? You know, I guess is the question.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I, I don't know what, to what extent, uh, the, the township would be willing to cover all of the, the due diligence costs or a portionals costs. I think that, that's something that we would have to discuss. And, um, so I think, you know, the first step is yes, the kind of evaluating, hey, what are those costs going to be to, to do this, this testing, um, to look into a prior, you know, ownership, prior agreements and determine, you know, if this can in fact be done. So what, what are those costs going to be? And then, yeah, we'll work with the township on some sort of agreement on whether or not they're going to cover all of those costs or the majority of those costs or half of those costs or what, what's the, the proposal? And then, um, probably bring, uh, whatever that agreement is back, uh, to then do that due diligence. And then let's do diligence, just don't, no decision would have to be made based on that information that's, that's evaluated.
Makes sense.
Yeah, is there a sufficient window to get that done? Cause I know we're, we're taxing you quite severely right now. Is there a sufficient window after that period closes? Cause we have to get a decision made on all of that pretty soon for the charter. You know, is the, I'd be curious to, to remember Dean's point about what that, what that kind of date is to give the team enough time to have that prepared for the season? Cause I think that would be really cool. Personally, the Sagatuck cross-country team has been quite, quite a thing for some time now. And it'd be, it'd be fun to, fun to celebrate that a little bit.
A place for them to run. Local day, wouldn't that be nice?
Um, so I do feel like, you know, on the scale of high school sports, a sense of urgency around that, you know, like, um, but, you know, it'd be interesting to get some kind of like, this is how long we think this would take. You know, sort of, sort of guesstimate so we can look at that. Cause yeah, I, I share the concern for like dumping all this stuff. But I, it sounds to me like we can have both, like we could wait just a little bit maybe and, and get this done well in advance of the time where it would need to, need to happen. But maybe we can vote on that, like, hey, when the time is, you know, can we get this? Can we just commit to getting it done before this time or something instead of, you know, not launching it right away?
So we'll have some work to do then for them.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to, I absolutely agree with Logan. I think it's a great idea. Um, I'd like to see how much it costs first, um, you know, uh, before we go forward with a lot, lot of this other, like engineering and environmental. Let's get a, let's get a cost breakdown before we go forward. And, um, and, uh, but, uh, yeah, I, I think that's important to see that first. And a breakdown on what our responsibility would be with this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to revocable license, I'm sorry, item G, revocable license agreement, sidewalk and street seating at four forty-nine water. This is Wix Park Bar and Grill, yes?
Yeah, yep, yes, Madam Mayor Protem. The, uh, so Wix has gone through the, 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 the Planning Commission and Historic District Commission for, uh, as you recall, the, the more kind of, in the COVID period, there was temporary approvals to expand, uh, outdoor dining into the streets, uh, and the sidewalk areas. And so now we're, we're working on getting everyone to compliance with today's zoning requirements. So, uh, as part of the, the planning commission process, uh, they had set some kind of conditions related to, um, uh, the seating, uh, the seating along Mary Street, uh, wouldn't be on a, a solid surface as, as proposed. And so Ms. Murphy's kind of evaluating that, that piece as a condition of the, the planning commission approval. Uh, so she's asked the, to move forward with, uh, uh, city council approval of a revocable license agreement for the seating on Water Street, both the, the sidewalk and the street. Uh, and then she may come back, uh, at a future date with the request for approval of the seating along Mary Street. But for, uh, Monday's purpose, it would be approving of the, the Water Street seating.
Ryan, this looks like the same setup she had last year. Is that true?
That is true.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with it. She did a great job with it last year, so.
I agree with Mr. Muncie. Any further comments or discussion?
Yeah, Madam Protem, uh, this was talked about at the Historic District Commission. It was pretty interesting because, um, the owner of the property was there to talk about, cause there's some, some discussion regarding her setup there, which, which was great. She was actually very amenable and, uh, it was a good conversation. The thing that brought up the most discussion though was what is mentioned or was just mentioned by the, uh, by Mr. Cummins is that, that space along Mary Street seemed to be of the biggest concern. And there was some evaluation or some analysis that needs to be done of the zoning ordinance because there was some, it's not clear yet. So I know that's still underway to evaluate what that's going to look like. And that's the reason why that's not on here. So, but that seemed to be the most, the most, I don't want to say controversial, but most of the questions are around that.
Member Anderson, please.
Yeah, the other thing that came up in the planning commission we discussed with her was, um, on the Mary Street side, there's a handy, uh, disabled parking spot there. And, um, I, Jake can say this more technically correct than I can, but we can't, um, so it, it blocked sort of how she had it set up, blocked the ability of people to use that space and get out through the, you know, and get out, which was raised by citizen. We technically, I think, can't, uh, require her to make that space more car door opening friendly. But she did commit to, um, being mindful of how they position things so that people can use that parking space with people who are disabled. Brian, am I characterizing that fairly?
So the, the zoning ordinance does have like, uh, some language that about not impacting, you know, car doors opening and leaving, you know? So, so there is some language related to that. I think the, the citizens' concern related to whether or not there was broader ADA requirements that would have, you know, prohibited, you know, required more space to be provided. And, and, uh, and I, I think, you know, that, that particular area doesn't necessarily have to be those requirements. I think the, the big concern at this point is that it's kind of a mulched area between the sidewalk and the street. And so it's not a solid surface and the zoning ordinance requires that the seating be on a solid surface.
Right.
So she's evaluating some, uh, pavers. It's something that our DPW and engineer would so need to take a look at, um, uh, if that's what's proposed or maybe she proposes, you know, to, to, um, you know, place concrete in that area or something like along those lines. Either way, I mean, those improvements are still going to require your approval as well as approval of the seating, so.
Yep. And so I just wanted to flag that that's something I, I, I would like us to pay attention to, to, to be sure that that space is. And to be clear, this def, this omits Mary. I, yeah, I, I got that. I just wanted to raise that.
Okay.
Just for awareness.
So any, I, I, I would just like to say that I've, I've seen it. I agree with Mr. Muncie. It's the same setup that, that she's had. I think she does a great job with that. I am absolutely in, in favor of this and I don't see any drawback, especially since she's going to take a look at Mary Street and do that separately. I understand the controversy around that, that seating area. All right, everyone all set with that? Okay, we'll move along to item H, special event, the Mount Bald Head Challenge. Do you want me to take this?
Well, I can kick it off in that, uh, you know, I, I, I think I know the applicants here, uh, you know, submit. So, uh, yes, we received the app, app, application from the Rotary Club again to do the Mount Bald Head Challenge. Uh, my understanding is that there aren't any, uh, changes, uh, the, the same as, as last year. And, uh, so they're requesting your approval of the event. And certainly we'll circle back to, to, you know, public safety and Department of Public Works, uh, to, to sort out, uh, some additional details if the event's approved.
That's really it. I, I, I put the application in for the Mount Bald Head Challenge. Um, the, the route is going to be the exact same, start at, uh, Oval Beach and at Coughlin Park. The, definitely going to be paying a special attention to, to the, uh, safety meeting and, um, obviously getting things organized with, uh, fire department. And we've got some certain challenges getting in and out of Perriman and that certainly well aware of that and, um, are paying special attention to it. And it's still obviously would be, any kind of approval be pending, um, the safety meeting. So I want to be clear on that.
Yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, I would just say this is the twenty-seventh annual, is that correct?
Twenty-second.
I'm sorry?
Twenty, wait, wait, what's today is twenty? It was twentieth was in twenty twenty, oh, it's twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But they meant two years for a couple of reasons, but yes.
Yeah, as one of the co-founders, I'm just super proud of this. I, I just am excited about how this has evolved and, uh, it's grown way beyond what the original six of us envisioned for the community. And, uh, I just really support this and look forward to volunteering. And, uh, this used to be our Sunday run, so.
Nice.
It's, it's a, Mayor, it's an excellent event. And, um, the only thing I would accuse the organizers of is false advertising because the ten K's a heck of, the ten K's a heck of a lot farther than ten K.
They fixed it.
You, you hit ten K at about, at about eight before you even crossed the river back into Sagatuck. And my, and trust me, my knees know when it's more than ten K. It's more than ten K.
I think we're advertising it as ten K-ish now that we, they own the fact that it's a little more, yeah, it's seven miles.
Thank you for that. My knees appreciate it.
Mr. Muncie?
Yay, sports!
Okay. We'll be sportsing, that's true.
It's a great event. And you guys do a great job with it. And, uh, and, uh, and, uh, thank you for.
I guess to your point, I do want to say, give a shout out to Rotary that it fully funds, it fully funds the Boys and Girls Club program here at our schools. Hundred kids a day attend that. And, uh, it's, it's really, um, I think a, a big benefit to the community and I'm proud to be, um, a part of it.
It really does show off the, uh, the city.
Yeah.
I mean, just, you know, it gives people a chance to see parts of Sagatuck that, you know, as a visitor they may not see. And I think it really does speak well for our community.
And afterwards, there'll be beer at Coughlin Park.
Which is nice, which is nice as well.
Everybody, yes. Okay, thank you. So at this point, we are on to our second public comment. Again, please state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes, and this is on anything.
Lana DeYoung, Sagatuck Township resident as of officially yesterday. There's a lot of misinformation and miscommunication swirling around about the airport property and also some questions that I think I, I, I might be able to address in my three minutes. And if I don't, I'm certainly, we can talk to you afterwards. Mr. Dean, I appreciate your comments about not alienating donors. Uh, I think we also have to be careful as a council and city about not alienating volunteers. We are volunteers that were asked to serve on a, um, Parks and Public Works Committee and have spent ungodly amount of hours on it. And Russ, I want you to know that the amount of time that we have spent on the airport property is more than we spent on the playground collectively. So a comment like, maybe Parks and Public Works should spend as much time on the airport property as they did the playground, really hurts my soul. We did a lot of due diligence, um, on this airport property. And just because maybe you weren't involved, because you can't be, doesn't mean there wasn't a lot of work done on it. First of all, we extensively reviewed the two thousand and nine, um, analysis that was done by Williams and Works, where they had a lot of potential uses for the property. where they had a lot of potential uses for the property. One of them was do nothing, and that's what that council did. So I hope this council does not go down that same road and do nothing. We commissioned two studies from ODC, the Ecological and the Sustainability Studies, which not everything is financial in a financial study. Yes, I agree, let's have a valuation of the land, but not everything is based on financial analyses. If you look at the sustainability study, I think some of the most important recommendations or findings that came out of that was that the existing canopy, the carbon sequestration is equivalent to heating or energy needs of 100 homes for a year, just from that property alone. It removes about 12,000 pounds of air pollution per year. We all remember how bad that smoke was coming from Canada. Could have been a lot worse if we didn't have that canopy there. Trees help filter and manage on that property 20,000 gallons of water per year for this area. So we have to take into account those kinds of things and not just do we sell it to the developer. I'm particularly sensitive about the SOAR analysis. We invited the community after all this other input, and we put that out there for people to read and then invited them to come and have input. If somebody missed that opportunity or just doesn't agree with what happened out of that analysis, that's their problem. That's not our problem. That's not your problem. It was already done. Nobody mentioned selling it to a developer. And the top priorities are there to read, but came out as conservation and trails and connectivity.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll come back Monday and tell you the rest of my list. The, the donors did not set a priority within the 130,000.
Hey, guys, I just wanted to address some.
Please state your name and address.
John Vanderbeek, I own 448 Frederick Street. I've been in the community for many, many years. I just wanted to address some of, some of the councilmen's comments, especially when you were talking about how it could be a world-class site, a center hub of parks, because that's my vision of it. And things you might not know about it is that there's surrounding properties that amount to over 100 acres, where I'm talking with private property owners that are along the creek south that can connect to Wade's Preserve. Wade's Preserve is on 62nd Street, as you know. When you go down Old Alleghan, you take a right, and people are ice fishing there these days, a lot more than they used to. It's run by the Michigan Nature Association. And they're okay with us connecting into there from Trails, even from the airport. The airport's also connected to the Tales and Trails Dog Park. There's a part of the parcel that connects to 63rd Street. Did you know that? Which is kind of remarkable. To me, it's like the sign is there to tell us that we're doing the right thing. Because the, the cooperation between township and city is there in physical form where the parcels connect. And so can those trails. And I think that's really neat. I personally, through Riverwood Council, me and Glenna and our other group members like Chris Clark, we've negotiated future, just like this donor is proposing, we have land donors that are coming in behind them, inspired by what you're considering here today with the airport property. They want to conserve and add more of these easements in their land. And they're right next door. They're south of the property. Imagine when Riverbluff Park can connect up through the dump site, connect over to airport someday, through the dog park, and then over to Wade's Preserve. Did you even know that was possible? It's pretty awesome. It's world-class. And the bigger thing that can happen with the domino effect of what we're deciding today with the help of this donor is to help all these other donors, help them get, help them give land, help them give money to support a beach to bridge trail that can someday take us from a hike from State Park down along the Padnos Preserve where the Township actually owns 10 acres there for a well. There can someday be a trail that connects to 134th across the street. We already have an easement that connects down to Riverbluff Park. We could go all the way old, down Old Alleghan. We have donors going all the way down to Manlius. Imagine when we connect to Richmond Bridge, a hike from the beach to the bridge. And where the bridge is, that's, that's where 45,000 acres of the Alleghan County Game Area start. Imagine those connections. Imagine the nature. People enjoy it. The animals get to live. Everybody's happy. I just wanted to address a couple of things. The dissent, the dissenting comments. I see the community here. We're here. Okay? I don't see anybody here that are these people saying you should sell. I did notice something that these people that say, why don't you consider selling? They're not saying I want to see it sold. They're expressing distrust in you guys and your work. They're saying, why didn't you do your job? That's what I hear from some of these, some of these folks that are saying, hey, why didn't you consider this? Why didn't you consider? I've been around here for the last year seeing you guys consider all kinds of stuff, including the things they're criticizing you for not considering. So I'm, just from a outside perspective, I see you doing your job. I see you considering it. And I'm out of time.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Sean.
Diana Decker, 128 Elizabeth. I was born, born here. But anyway, I like Mr. Dean's comment regarding safety. I've been involved in a couple environmental studies with clients, buyers, phase one, phase two, phase three studies. So I think that's a very good concern. Comment regarding the safety concern there, just to double check that everything is safe for our kids to be going on there. And the other good comment that someone made was regarding the township cost. You know, let's see how much the township is going to contribute, how, or how much are they gonna be willing to assess? I know, remember years ago how much they contributed on our police, paying for assisting with that. And then regarding the rental management companies, again, I did, at the bottom of the letter that I turned in to Ryan today, there is the Cam at Lar, Lara, there's her phone number there to contact. And also there's Bernie, the attorney to contact, their phone number there to find out about that regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, go 341 Main Street. Yes, to everything Glenna said and to everything John said. So I won't repeat since the hour is running late. What I will say though is, again, I would remind you that one of the most controversial and maybe popular subjects that we've addressed here in a long time was short-term rentals. And let's see, we held a public meeting in September?
Yes.
September.
Not July.
Whenever. The weather was nice and it was warm.
I'm sorry, can I just say, Sarah, you didn't start her time.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. Good.
I want you, I want you to have the three minutes you're due. And I just realized that you were just using the rest. So please.
Thank you. Okay. So anyway, most, one of the most controversial, popular, depending on which side you're on, subjects that we've addressed in a long time. We had a public meeting. I was at that public meeting. It was at the high school, the auditorium, was it? And I don't think that we had public notice the meeting, I don't know how many times, talked about it. I don't think that the entire community showed up for it. In fact, since I'm fairly familiar with who did show up, and fairly familiar with those who objected to it, I know for a fact that there were people who were very objective who didn't show up. But people did. But you're never going to get 100%. Just not going to do it. John, thank you for pointing out that we are here tonight, supporting this. That doesn't mean that you have to agree with us. But please, we are here and we show up. I've been a community advocate and activist most of my life since I've been a teenager. And one of the principles of our democracy that I truly believe in, and hopefully example in my life, is if you care about something enough, you show up and you speak out. So please don't devalue those of us, even though there are only a few of us here. And if other people, they can join, I mean, you've made it as convenient as possible to be able to show up and speak out. And if this is it, this is it. And finally, as you address strategy going forward, first of all, I'm sorry, I'm being so sort of direct, but if you're going to do strategy, do strategy. You don't do strategy today. You do a work plan or an action plan. It is not strategic. And part of your strategy should always be to be nimble. I come from the corporate world. Those companies that do well in all respects in their business, they strategize around nimbleness, because you will never be able to predict everything that's going to happen a year that's going to affect your plans. So I'm begging you. For the future of this community, those of us who live here full-time, those of us who live here part-time, those of us who visit here, please, plan. Do it strategically and please incorporate nimbleness and be prepared to address it. It takes strength. It takes courage. But you know what? That's why you're sitting where you chose to run for office. And that's why we elected you. So respectfully, even though I deeply, deeply appreciate your service, please do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Kenneth Butler, on behalf of Saugatuck Township. First of all, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. I'm also on the Planning Commission. And there was a question, we don't know what Saugatuck Township thinks we should do with the airport property. You should put the trails in. And Mr. Vanderbeek is absolutely correct because he and I walked it. There is a slice of the, it's technically the Tales and Trails Park, but we always call it the Dog Park. There is a part of that land that has a trail that's roughed in. It's not ready to go. It needs wood chips. Luckily, Mr. Hevner's business is like next door, so that won't be a problem. But we have the ability to connect the airport properties acres with the Tales and Trails property with the landfill site. You'd have a huge site for walking and running. And I would be proud to test my 70-year-old knees against your 67-year-old knees, because I don't want to have a place with lots of roots, because roots hurt, because you crash. The other thing is to the Acting City Manager, if you come up with any of the contracts between the communities and/or waste management, I forwarded the EPA report to Ryan. I can also forward it to you. I have the 1996 report. But my hair was a lot darker back then. If you can come up with anything, I have a rough idea of what that agreement should look like. I can present it to you so you can, it's just, and it's labeled draft, but it at least gets us to the point. And I include in that, that the township will test all those methane pipes to make sure there's nothing coming out of there that is noxious or dangerous. I include that in the agreement. And I actually presented that to your predecessor two years ago, that the Fire Department would have tested for methane on all those vent sites for nothing. He turned it down. So I will go back to them and confirm that they will still do that testing. But no, I don't want a cross-country meet where there's methane or noxious gases present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Anyone else in the gallery? No? Anyone online? Sarah?
I don't see any, yeah.
We do have one hand in the.
Mr. Raphael.
Raphael, if you would unmute yourself. Chris, could you unmute yourself, please?
I gotta start all over again?
Please start, yeah.
Chris Raphael, 569 Wyrick. I would request that you go ahead and get more information about the old airport property and turn it into a park and walking trails. We need more of that than we need financial interests looked at. We've got enough money-making things here in town already. And as a resident, I want residential things with my tax dollars, not business things. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay, we will close our second public comment. There is correspondence in the packet for you to review. And now into council comments, I can start with Mr. White, if you'd be so kind.
None today, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you that I appreciate everybody that came out to talk on behalf of trails. And don't be mad at me just because I like fiscal responsibility. I am for trails. I am for conservative. It's just I like to see a little, I'd like to see those numbers first. So, so you guys, I could tell when you came back up, you were very passionate. But I, I think I can tell from our council all around here, you have a lot of support with us.
Mr. Dean?
Nothing this afternoon.
Ms. Anderson?
Uh, yeah, two things. One, Diana's still here and Rich, I think, is still on, yes. Both correctly corrected me after our council, last council meeting. I misspoke when I talked about non-homestead property tax, the extra mills, not going to the schools. They do go to the schools. So it's about 230 some thousand dollars. What I also learned, so I, I wanted to correct that, I've corrected it with both of them. What I did learn though, that I thought was interesting, is that if you take the, the amount of money we get per pupil, which is how we calculate that, if we were to add 24 students to our school district, we would actually capture more than the amount of money we get from non-homestead property tax. So I stand corrected and I apologize for my error. But I'm still all for increasing our student body population to increase our funding that way. I think it's a more sustainable model for us. Second thing I want to say is, I did not vote to add the HR audit to the agenda today. And the reason for that is I think that's a really important discussion. We should give the public more notice of that discussion. And we should also have time to prepare for that discussion. I have communicated with the mayor and our legal team that I think in addition to looking at our overall performance management policies, we need to review our code of conduct, our ethics and our confidentiality agreements, and put in some tight requirements that we all attest to those annually, both council and staff. So it's a very important discussion. And I think we need to give the public proper notice and prepare for that properly. And I, I fully support that.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much to everybody that came about the airport property. Like has been mentioned by other council members, I am in support of that idea. But it's, we have some other things I think is a responsibility, financial responsibilities, looking at some other things first before that. And thank you very much, Councilmember Anderson, for those comments. So just to kind of set the table on what I was, my idea is for an HR audit is given recent events in the city, my simple idea was to direct the mayor or designate a city council members and interim city manager to engage Michigan Municipal League or another independent organization with experience in this type of work, to conduct an audit of the city of Saugatuck's human resources capabilities to assess our strengths, identify areas for improvement, and align HR practices with organizational goals. So I think we are on the same page on this. I just think given recent events, we need to be moving more quickly on this. Thanks.
Thank you. First thing I want to do is thank our volunteers. We have so many that do so much for this community. And it's, much is asked. And, and I think if, if a lot of us could take the time to look at what they contribute, we'd be much more grateful. Excited about the prospect of a donor. I think that it's wonderful that people see what I see enough to contribute their time, their talent, their treasure. And that's what we all have to offer on some level. Echo with Member Anderson's comments that the human resource thing is, is important and it's too important to be done on the fly. We talk a lot about not rushing things in here. And I, and I didn't want to rush that conversation. I know that I read Mr. Gardner's letter to the editor. I, I see that where he's coming from in some of these things. And we, we certainly need to talk about that and, and talk about ethics, than the way that we behave as a council, hold ourselves to some standards. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion, Muncy, second. Anderson, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Motion being adjourned.
And I was remiss in not thanking Glenna for her service and wishing her well in the township.